Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Southbridge School Committee to order, and we'll go ahead and do roll call. Carla De La Cruz Devla.
Present.
Brittany Davidson.
Present.
Norma Tiznick.
Present.
Martina Shea.
Present.
Frank Gabinski.
Present.
Maria Torres.
Present.
Andrew Murch. Present. Move on to Agenda Item Number Two, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move on to Agenda Item Number Three. The School Committee would like to observe a moment of silence for Seventh Grader Aria LeBeau, who tragically lost her life a few weeks ago. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Review and Approve the Minutes from the May Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Is unanimous of all present? We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Citizens Forum, Public Input. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the School Committee on matters not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, Chairman's Announcements. I'll entertain a motion to move this to occur after Item Twelve, just so we can go ahead and move with presentations.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of those in favor? Any opposed? Is unanimous of all present? We will move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Latino Educators Shine Awards Proclamation, honoring Jared Figueroa and Judy Masonette.
Mr. Chairman, and through you to the members, it is an honor and a privilege. It brings me great joy to be here tonight, celebrating some of the fantastic people and things going on in the Southbridge Public Schools. It was great to reach out and collaborate with the committee on this evening's recognitions. First up, we had two recipients in District of the Latino Educators Shine Awards that took place in Boston last month, and it is recognizing trailblazers of Latino descent in the field of education. The two recipients from the Southbridge Schools were a math teacher at the middle school, Jared Figueroa, who unfortunately is not with us tonight, and the Assistant Superintendent and my friend and colleague Judy Masonette. Mr. Chairman, I invite you up for the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. This proclamation is presented to Judy Masonette, whereas education is a never-ending process, and those individuals who are the most content are those who continue to develop their intellectual capacities, grow with the times in which they live, and work to achieve their highest potential. And whereas, the Southbridge Public Schools recognizes the quality education and is essential to community well-being; and whereas, the Southbridge Public Schools, while maintaining their original purpose of teaching young people to read, write, and figure, have through the years broadened and enhanced their curricula in response to changing economic and social trends, and special commendation is due to this employee; and whereas, it is acknowledged in our community that quality education is not acquired in the classroom alone, but also by exposure to community cultural offerings and by instilling civic responsibility under school auspices; and whereas, the Southbridge Public Schools is honored to recognize and celebrate Judy Masonette, recipient of the 2025 Latino Shine Educator Award. Now therefore, on this Seventeenth Day of June 2025, we thank Judy Masonette for being an outstanding employee and her dedication to the students and staff of Southbridge Public Schools. This proclamation is presented to Jared Figueroa, whereas education is a never-ending process, and those individuals who are the most content and those who continue to develop their intellectual capacities grow with the times in which they live and work to achieve their highest potential. And whereas, the Southbridge Public Schools recognizes that quality education is essential to community well-being; and whereas, the Southbridge Public Schools, while maintaining their original purpose of teaching young people to read, write, and figure, have through the years broadened and enhanced their curricula in response to changing economic and social trends, and special commendation is due to this employee; and whereas, it is acknowledged in our community that quality education is not acquired in the classroom alone, but also by exposure to community cultural offerings and by instilling civic responsibility under school auspices; and whereas, the Southbridge Public Schools is honored to recognize and celebrate Jared Figueroa, recipient of the 2025 Latino Shine Educator Award. And now therefore, on this Seventeenth Day of June 2025, we thank Jared Figueroa for being an outstanding employee and his dedication to the students and staff of Southbridge Public Schools. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Recognition to Southbridge Academy Nurse, Stephanie Fiorucci RN BFN.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To give a little background on why we're recognizing Stephanie this evening, this fall at Southbridge Academy, we unfortunately had an episode of violence between two students in which one was severely injured. And Stephanie, in her charge as the school nurse, was one of the first individuals on the scene, kept a cool head, you know, applied emergency first aid, and, you know, is credited with ensuring that an already bad situation wasn't demonstrably worse by her level-headed thinking, quick action, and ability to stay calm in a very intense situation. You know, we owe her a tremendous debt of gratitude for ensuring that, you know, at the end of the day, the student was okay, and we appreciate it greatly. I know the fire department came and recognized Stephanie earlier this year. They also concur that, you know, her very quick response, again, prevented a bad situation from being potentially much worse. Stephanie is a tremendous asset to the school system. I've enjoyed knowing her personally over the last few years, and I can't thank her enough for making sure that everybody's child was okay that day. So, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. This proclamation is presented to Stephanie Fiorucci RN, whereas the Southbridge Public Schools has benefited greatly because of the dedication and hard work of its employees who strive to improve themselves and consistently be courteous and helpful to others. And whereas, on February 26, 2025, at Southbridge Academy, Stephanie Fiorucci RN immediately acted to provide a student with medical assistance. And whereas, special commendation is due to this employee. And whereas, Southbridge Public Schools is honored to pay tribute to Stephanie Fiorucci RN, who personifies the true meaning of hero and whose compassion and genuine commitment to the welfare of other human beings is a course of inspiration to everyone. And whereas, the Southbridge Public Schools is honored to recognize and celebrate the valuable contributions and the nobility of Stephanie Fiorucci RN. Now therefore, on this Seventeenth Day of June 2025, we thank Stephanie Fiorucci RN for her heroism and for being an outstanding employee. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Recognition for the Retirees.
Again, an honor to be here, recognizing some of our longtime, very dedicated employees to the school system. I will name the retirees, and then I know the chairman will read each of their proclamations. I'm reading them in order of their years of service. The first individual we'll be recognizing tonight is Linda Pirani, then Lisa Dyer, Elizabeth Scully, Angela Tarkinio, Chris Cook, and Gail Briggs. I can say, in my years in the district, it's been a pleasure working with each of you. You will be missed. Your contributions have been significant, and we appreciate it, and we certainly encourage all of you, after a well-deserved break and time away, to not be a stranger. So, turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. This proclamation is presented to Linda Pirani, whereas Linda Pirani is an outstanding person who has contributed so much to our community; and whereas Linda Pirani has retired as a food service substitute in the Southbridge Public School System after working for two years; and whereas Linda Pirani's dedicated service to the youth of this community deserves special recognition. Now therefore, Southbridge Public Schools deem it an honor and pleasure to extend our sincere thanks and appreciation for Linda's dedicated service to the children of our community. In witness therefore, on this day, June Seventeenth, 2025, this Southbridge School Committee joins in the celebration of your achievement and wishes your continued success. This proclamation is presented to Lisa Dyer, whereas Lisa Dyer is an outstanding person who has contributed so much to our community; whereas Lisa Dyer has retired as a teacher in the Southbridge Public School System after working for six years; whereas during these years, Lisa Dyer has served as a teacher, friend, and role model to many of our children, inspiring them to learn and to help others to learn. And whereas, Lisa Dyer's dedicated service to the youth of this community deserves special recognition. Now therefore, Southbridge Public Schools deem it an honor and pleasure to extend our sincere thanks and appreciation for Lisa's dedicated service to the children of our community. In witness therefore, on this day, June Seventeenth, 2025, this Southbridge School Committee joins in the celebration of your achievement and wishes your continued success. This proclamation is presented to Elizabeth Scully, whereas Elizabeth Scully is an outstanding person who has contributed so much to our community; and whereas Elizabeth Scully has retired as an educational assistant in the Southbridge Public School System after working for nine years. And whereas Elizabeth Scully's dedicated service to the youth of this community deserves special recognition. Now therefore, Southbridge Public Schools deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend our sincere thanks and appreciation for Elizabeth's dedicated service to the children of our community. In witness therefore, on this day, June Seventeenth, 2025, this Southbridge School Committee joins in the celebration of your achievement and wishes you continued success. This proclamation is presented to Angela Terraquino, whereas, if I butchered your name, I'm so sorry. Whereas Angela Terraquino is an outstanding person who has contributed so much to our community; whereas Angela Terraquino has retired as an educational assistant in the Southbridge Public Schools after working for 20 years; and whereas Angela Terraquino's dedicated service to the youth of this community deserves special recognition. Now therefore, Southbridge Public Schools deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend our sincere thanks and appreciation for Angela's dedicated service to the children of our community. In witness therefore, on this day, June Seventeenth, 2025, this Southbridge School Committee joins in the celebration of your achievement and wishes you continued success. This proclamation is presented to Christina Cook, whereas Christina Cook is an outstanding person who has contributed so much to our community; and whereas Christina Cook has retired as an administrative assistant in the Southbridge Public School System after working for 23 years. Whereas Christina Cook's dedicated service to the youth of this community deserves special recognition. Now therefore, Southbridge Public Schools deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend our sincere thanks and appreciation for Christina's dedicated service to the children of our community. In witness therefore, on this day, June Seventeenth, 2025, this Southbridge School Committee joins in the celebration of your achievement and wishes you continued success. The last one, I'll admit and put it in the public eye, I'm a little biased. This proclamation is presented to Gail Briggs, whereas Gail Briggs is an outstanding person who has contributed so much to our community; and whereas Gail Briggs has retired as an educator in the Southbridge Public School System after working for 32 years. And whereas during these years, Gail Briggs has served as a teacher, friend, and role model to many of our children, inspiring them to learn and to help others to learn. Whereas Gail Briggs' dedicated service to the youth of this community deserves special recognition. Now therefore, Southbridge Public Schools deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend our sincere thanks and appreciation for Gail's dedicated service to the children of our community. In witness therefore, on this day, June Seventeenth, 2025, this Southbridge School Committee joins in the celebration of your achievement and wishes you continued success. Thank you very much to my son's fourth-grade teacher, Ms. Gail Briggs. We're actually going to, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting into a quick 10-minute recess. We'll go ahead and return this meeting to order. We will go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number 10, Update on Summer Hiring and Programs. I will turn it over to Superintendent Mr. Bill Metzger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the members. That was a wonderful recognition of some of our employees. I wanted to give a shout-out also to recent retiree and still frequent contributor to the Southbridge Public Schools, Kathy Kelly. Thank you so much, Kathy, for all you do. This evening, I would like to, for a few moments, invite up the new head of the Human Resources Department at the Southbridge Public Schools, my friend and colleague, Mr. Joe LaBarbera. He will give you a brief update on what the summer hiring season looks like, and you can expect more detailed updates throughout the summer. So, Joe, would you come up, please?
Good evening. And so, I'd just like to provide you a brief update about where we are with our current summer hiring. One of the things I can share is, we've had fewer openings at this time of the year than we did last year. We attest that to higher retention rates. We've also been really aggressive this spring in terms of recruitment. And so currently, what we're looking at is, we have a couple of elementary school teacher openings at the high school and middle school level. We have a couple of final interviews scheduled, and then for the certified positions, the high school and middle school will be fully filled in those areas. We do have some support staff currently opening that we are trying to fill. We also do have, I would say, almost probably three to five current special education openings. What I think is really a strong positive is, at the secondary level, in some of the hard-to-fill areas like special education, we are fully staffed. And so I think that kind of speaks to just some of the updates that we have for staffing. Over the summer, we'll continue to conduct final interviews, continue our recruitment efforts, but like I said, we're in a much better position than we were last year, considering that we just have fewer overall hires. So I'm welcome or open to answer any questions from the School Committee, if you have any, about our current hiring or staffing profiles.
I have a question.
Sure.
As always. Are there any candidates for the opening in the special education?
So I think we do have a couple of potential candidates. I think that, as you know, the special education is something that's hard to fill. I think we're continuing to kind of explore a number of different avenues about how we recruit and identify special education teachers, and so that is definitely something that we are exploring. We do have one candidate for one of the positions, and then like I said, we are using a number of different mechanisms to make sure that we can recruit, you know, anybody we can to make sure that we are fully staffed for our special education programs. I think what we've also looked to do is, you know, in areas when we aren't unable to staff those positions, partner with agencies to provide coverage, or look at how we provide additional staffing to make sure those rooms are well-supported.
One more follow-up question.
Yeah, that's okay.
Can you share, like, what the mechanisms are that you're using to try to attract candidates?
Yep, so we attend recruitment fairs throughout the year. This year, we attended the Merck Recruitment Fair. I think we drummed up somewhere near 40 resumes, which was really good, and a number of those we were able to hit on in terms of both interviewing and then getting all the way through to the hiring phase. So, one of them is attending the different career fairs. Another one is, we use different platforms where we post, and through some of those different postings, we're able to identify candidates and then reach out, almost like a cold call, just to reach out and see if they're interested, and then begin the recruitment process. One of the nice things is, is I think we have a lot to celebrate here at Southbridge Public Schools, and so it's been nice to share some of the work that we've been doing to recruit candidates. You know, I can share that when we were at the Merck Recruitment Fair, and we talk about both our mentoring program, how we support new teachers, you know, being a twice-gold PBIS district, a lot of candidates are very interested in the work that's happening here. And so I think for sure, that's been another piece that's made the recruitment process this spring more fruitful. Take any other questions?
That's it, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Real quick, I got a couple. So you say you visit different recruiting fairs and things like that. Are you, is there also a set strategy to reach out to some of the local graduate courses or colleges with graduate courses? Has that been effective?
Yeah, I think that building partnerships with some of the local universities is something that we're looking to continue to grow upon. We recognize that that is for sure definitely an untapped resource, and so I think we're looking at different ways to build partnerships with the universities. One of the things that we do have upcoming is UMass Dartmouth has offered to host a cohort for master's programs within District. And so I think some of those things are some of the beginning early relationships, where we develop stronger partnerships with the local universities so that we can tap into some of their new graduates. We're also exploring what other resources might be out there in terms of how, again, you build those connections with universities so we can get an early jump on some of the candidates. What I would also say is that the Merck Fair, the way that that works is they invite, we saw kids from all types of universities, Boston University, UMass, Amherst, and so that's the largest one, but like I said, I do think that we want to continue to figure out how we strengthen partnerships with the universities so we can get an early jump on some of those candidates.
Okay, and do we have, as part of the recruitment process throughout the year, do we have a mechanism in place to review what comparable districts are offering in order for us to stay competitive? Is there a mechanism for that?
I wouldn't say there's necessarily a mechanism, but all contracts are generally public, and so I think we generally have an idea of what other districts are offering for salaries and what they're offering for benefit packages, and then I think obviously we try to make sure that we're making competitive offers to the candidates based on their qualifications. So we take all those things into consideration throughout the hiring process.
And my last question, when you're doing these, or when you're developing this recruitment strategy, I'm assuming that you're also working potentially in part with members of the SEA, just to make sure that, you know, the recruitment's effective and does have teacher input?
Yeah, I think we always want to be considering, you know, what our local unions are saying and providing feedback. I think a big piece of that is making sure that our staff are feeling supported and feeling like, like the New Teacher Institute, we're really excited about the New Teacher Institute that we're gonna put forth in August. I think putting those things forth, as well as strong mentoring programs, offering things like in district cohorts for master's programs, all those competitive packages when we hire, all those are things I think definitely for sure play a factor, and continuing to solicit our employees and say, hey, you know, what are some of the things that we continue to improve upon to make sure that we are, like I said, offering, you know, a really a high-quality learning environment for both our teachers and our kids.
All right, thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. LaBarbera. Now for the second portion of the agenda item, the committee had asked me, and I'm happy to present some information regarding our summer programs. I would say, the 21st Century Program is the crown jewel of our summer programming, and it is what we are going to devote a lot of the presentation to. I want to thank Donna Zanelli, who's in the audience tonight. She really spearheads the work with the 21st Century Program, including making sure the grants are renewed each year and that we are providing maximum opportunities to our kids for extra and co-curricular learning, so thank you, Donna. So, the summer programming 2025. 21st Century Program is possible because of the school after-school, out-of-school time grant offered by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. And as you can see, the awards we receive year to year are substantial. This summer, we're planning on a program built on a thematic basis with a focus on literacy instruction. Students will work to, on improving their reading and writing through project-based learning and fun activities, really hands-on stuff that the kids get very excited about. Some of the activities include, but are not limited to, book talks, writing, composing original works and poems, creating comic books, or as my sons call them, graphic novels, creating science models and experiments, and using the engineering design process to break down and solve a problem. Some special events that happen at the different locations are provided by Mobile Ed Productions and Simon Says Productions to provide, you know, some fun outdoor activities for our students throughout the summer. At our three elementary schools, we'll be using a weekly thematic approach that culminate with weekly projects and fun activities from outside vendors that will connect programming and, you know, keep students excited about the learning opportunities that they have over the summer. A breakdown of the programming at the elementary schools. At Eastford Road, the first week, we're going to explore plants. Second week, one of my favorite topics of study, learn about dinosaurs and what a paleontologist does. Week three, learn about the ocean habitat. Week four, learn how animals adapt to survive in their varied environments. Maybe we can talk about some adaptations on how to survive 17 rainy Saturdays in a row? Week five, I don't know if any of the parents out there know what I'm talking about.
Be nice this weekend.
Don't give me hope. Week five, students learn about how science, technology, arts, and math are integrated while, again, applying the engineering design process. At Charlton Street School, the first week will be some SEL learning projects. Week two, force and motion, some physics. Week three, space exploration. Week four, explore the science of light and optical illusions. And week five, design and building a water park. That sounds like a lot of fun. And at West Street, social-emotional learning projects using the Second Step Curriculum and Program in Week One. Week two, the art of comic books. Week three, explore force and motion. Week four, that's space exploration, and expand upon high-quality project-based learning projects about recess design and a focus on games that can be played. a focus on games that can be played. It's a lot better than when I went to summer school and had a workbook to practice my cursive. At the middle school, the summer, the middle school program will be focused on a type of book club approach to promote literacy. Student projects will focus on creation of an original work of fiction based on the theme being studied, original poetry, opportunity to create a game that focuses on the plot and theme of the book or books they've read or the original work created. We have some great creative minds in our middle school student population, and I would, I'd love to see some of the things they come up with over the summer. Really have a very strong overall arts program in the schools, too, that I invite you guys and the general public to come and check out. For the older students, we have an internship program, again funded through the 21st Century Program and grants. We will be hiring high school students to work as interns in the program at the other sites. Interns will learn how to work with students in a school setting, mentorship, and an education career pathway. Mrs. Zanelli has done a great job working with the interns over the last few summers, and it's created a little bit of a pipeline of employment for us, where a couple of them have been hired as education assistants in the district. That's work we're looking for you to expand upon. According to the survey of academic and youth outcomes, Southbridge has shown growth in all of the areas that the 21st Century Program looks to promote and enhance, including critical thinking, relationship building, engagement, communication, and peer-to-peer relationships. Extended school year, different program now, is more commonly referred to in the business as ESY. It is a specialized program for some special education students to participate in per their individualized educational plans. It provides year-round schooling for them to continue to work towards and prevent slippage on attainment of individual goals, both social, emotional, and academic, as outlined in their individualized education plan. And again, is a closed program only available to certain students through the individualized education plan process. Summer Feeding Program, another outstanding program spearheaded by our Director of Food Services, Ellen Finelli. It's a federal program that provides funding for meals to all students during the summer. And the Department of Food Services sets up locations in collaboration with the community that are easily accessible throughout the district. Those locations include the Public Library, the COPS and Kids Program, the Town Recreation Program, and this summer they will also be at the Messiah Church Summer Camp. Again, this is a federal program that ensures our kids get access to healthy meals throughout the summer months. There's also some fun activities and games available at each of the locations that food is being served. Summer Credit Recovery, Summer School. It, you know, takes place at the middle and high school, and it's for students who require credit recovery based on grades and/or their attendance. We utilize it because, you know, the goal is, you know, the closer we can keep kids to their actual graduation date and with their original cohort of students, you know, the statistics would show you the higher the likelihood that they graduate from high school. So we invite a lot of kids to come and participate in this program. We also run credit recovery programs during the February and April vacations of each school year, again, with a view towards trying to keep kids on task and on track to graduate on time. Early College Explorer Programs, spearheaded by Kathleen Caterett, who's also here in attendance this evening. This year, it will run from June 23rd through the 27th, and it is done in collaboration with the Early College Southbridge Program and grant funding that Kathleen also plays a critical role in. There are going to be two different pathways for kids, older kids, to explore career options this summer and that next week. I can't believe it's summer next week. I guess it's kind of summer now. Path one is a health science pathway and career exploration that includes the students attending being trained and certified in CPR, which I think is great. And that is in collaboration with the Southbridge Fire Department. I think I take this opportunity, I'm happy to announce, we're also gonna be working with the fire department this fall on having a fire sciences course at the high school for students that are interested in a career in the fire services. Thanks again to Kathleen and Chief Normandin for spearheading that initiative. We're very excited to have it take place at the high school. And path two is an information technology, career exploration, and education on coding and robotics. And students are gonna have a trip to the police department and work with their drone officer and learn about drone technology. I think that's also a very exciting opportunity. And again, so happy that we're reaching out to our partners on the municipal side to form some of these partnerships for our kids. And, you know, during the week, students will also take trips to various area businesses and learn, you know, a little bit about a number of different potential career pathways for their post-public education. Questions about any of our summer programs? Yes, Brett?
Per usual. For the earlier programs that you talked about, is there like a limit to the number of students accepted for like the Charlton Street, West Street, Eastford Road?
Yes, there are.
And how is that determined on like who gets accepted? If you can answer. Can you come up to the mic and speak? I'm sorry.
It's for the TV.
According to the guy in the back, not so much.
Throw a ball for staying.
The guy in the back is giving us the...
Sorry about that, I don't wanna be on TV, look at my hair. So what happens is because of funding, which goes down every year, so just understand that, we have to limit the number of seats to ensure that we have, we try to get like a one to 10 ratio with teachers, so we limit it at forty students. And then we have to worry about how many buses we get, that's why we stick with forty. So that's how that's determined. So it's a lottery system. We open up the registration process, we've got it down electronically, QR codes, send out convolve messages. And we, when I first took over the program, we, we would open it up for like two weeks and hope we got kids. Now it's like three days, I'm like, oh my lord, we have to stop! So we limit it to like a four or five-day window that we take applications, then we close it down, we send the names, or I send the names to the schools, and the schools have a lottery system and basically, you know, randomly select however many until they get to forty. This year, we're lucky enough, we did apply for an expansion grant, so we're trying to add ten more seats to the Eastford Road Program. That's the hardest program to work with because we require two buses because of the age of the students. So that's a huge cost. But we, I'm hopeful we got it. If not, I'll be asking for money. And then the middle school program is probably far, probably, even when he talks about crown jewels, the middle school program under Principal Hul has been amazing. And she's actually, because we can fit more students on the bus and a lot more parents are picking up, I think she's got it up to one hundred and twenty this year. So it's been really impressive. They, in that particular program, they recruit. You know, we opened it up, the registration, we had one child register, they actively recruit. And the kids are excited, I'm excited. So, and again, we got the expansion grant, I hope.
Keeping our fingers crossed.
And that's how it's chosen.
Thank you.
Don't go away.
Do you have any other questions?
I do, but I think Martina has a follow-up question to that, so go ahead.
I do, have you, are you finished?
With her, yes, but go ahead.
You're next.
I'm next, okay. This is wonderful. This is wonderful. I am going to, as always, ask funding questions. Have we heard anything from the federal government about what lunch programs and any kind of funding they may give us? Because I noticed you, obviously you have your summer lunch program, but I keep hearing that some people in Washington want that money to go away. Have we heard anything?
So the DESI representative that works with us has been very clear that we have, we have funding to run 21st Century until the end of next year. So as far as that's concerned, we're safe. She said, don't talk to me until next year about the other part. So our funding that you saw up there will get us through this summer and next school year.
Okay.
So we're good.
I will be asking the question again.
It's okay, I don't mind.
Okay, and the middle school program, the book club?
Yes.
What books are you using?
Oh, now you're gonna ask me a hard question. Okay, so I, I can see the titles because we...
It's okay, you can eat...
The 21st Century, so 21st Century Funding bought the books for the students.
Okay.
Every child that comes to the program receives a backpack, and regardless of the program, they receive two books
Okay.
that are selected by the literacy specialists within the buildings or the 21st Century Site Coordinator, for in the case of the middle school, the book club. I remember one of them for the elementary is Otter, and I can't remember the other book. I can see the, I can see the pictures, I've only stuffed one hundred and twenty backpacks. And if I can get back to Mr. Metzger's title...
Just email them to me, I'm probably the only one who's fanatically obsessed with middle school books.
Okay, but yeah, they were, they were chosen by the literacy specialists and the administrative team at the middle school. It is the two books that are required for some, that they require for summer reading. And so I made sure that they had them.
Perfect.
Okay, I can't remember, sorry.
Are there any other questions?
I have follow-up questions for you, Bill. For the extended school year, is that for like all of the grades for the students who need it? So from like kindergarten up? Or whoever has an IEP?
So it's available to any students from kindergarten up, yeah, that have it as part of their individualized education program. It is, again, it's highly specialized. It's not, it's narrow in focus, you know, with a small cohort of students.
And is it like a half day or a full day?
That's a good question. I don't know the precise hours, I don't think it exactly mirrors a school day.
Okay.
But it's, it's full day programming.
Okay. That's all my questions, thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody else have questions? Real quick, the summer, the summer meal program, that's funded with the USDA grants
Correct.
that we've gotten, and we're still good on that for the time being. Because I think the last time this question was asked, a couple of months ago during the budget, we had established that the food, that those grants were sound and we were solid throughout. Just for a little clarification on that.
Sure, and it's a relevant question that I know will come up again and again. We have, and rightly so, we have no indication at this time that the funding will be impacted. I, I suspect if funding for that program were impacted, we would all know about it in a hurry.
I had read that one of the states was stopping their food program for the elderly, so I was, makes me worried.
Yeah, I would be concerned as well. I can't speak to that, but like I said, as of this afternoon, you know, every indication is that the funding's not in jeopardy.
And I just got one more question. The high school program, you said you hired the students to be interns. Is there a Feature Educators of America program at the high school?
No.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Bill.
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry.
I just have a question on the Early College Explorer Program. So does any of, any completion of this program go to any credits or...
Great, great question, no. So this is really like a sampler, if you will, to get kids excited and thinking about career and college readiness. Whereas, you know, the early college program we run during the school year, you know, you do get college credit for.
Thank you.
I have a question. So for the Summer Credit Recovery Program, understanding that this is an opportunity for students to make up any work that they have missed, or, you know, to meet the goal that they need to graduate, how is this communicated with our students, this program? So are they...
So the school-based team, you know, members of the administrative team and the counseling department reach out to families on an individual basis to make them aware of the, of the opportunity. Because it is, right, a, it's a certain subset of students, right? It's not available to kids that are interested in learning more about English or history or science or what have you. It's students that are in jeopardy of losing credit, either through grades that they've attained or attendance or a combination of the two.
And are, and are these students communicated by the counselor or the educator prior to this program starting? Or is this like ending our school year, understanding that they failed and then communicated?
So I would honestly have to bring back more concise information to you. What I can tell you is that the, the counselors and the school-based admin are in frequent touch with families, particularly as we move closer to potential graduation date about this is what's happening with the student, we want to work with you to ensure that they stay on track to graduate with their cohort. You know, you have opportunities again, a couple during the school year and then throughout the summer to, in fact, make sure that you stay on track.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And two of the reading books for the, for the 21st Century Program are For Lamb by Lisa Klein Ransom and Promise Boys by Nick Brooks.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Metzger.
Thank you, guys.
We'll move on to agenda item number 11, the Summer Institute and MASCE Conference. I will actually pass this over to Ms. Brittany Davison.
Thank you. So I'd ask for this to be on the agenda so that we could have a brief discussion about it. I know last year I attended the conference and the year before Carla was able to attend, and it was an amazing learning opportunity. We were able to connect with other school committee members, superintendents, and really learn a lot, and I think it would be beneficial to all of us. But I know that the conference, it is a couple of days, so I know not everybody can attend due to various reasons. So I know MASCE also offers a summer institute, which is usually for two days, but this year it is one day on July 19th, and it's going to be covering collective bargaining. So I thought it would just be helpful to see which of the members were able to attend the conference or could only attend the summer institute, so we could look at what our budget is and potentially ask MASCE for assistance as they offered it to us last year, as we're trying to work, you know, with DESI and do this plan.
Just a quick, so just to kind of open it up, is there any current member of the school committee that you, that would like to go to the Summer Institute over the conference?
Not sure yet.
Okay.
Summer Institute is on bargaining.
Yeah, July 19th, from nine to three on collective bargaining.
Yeah, and I understand that most of our contracts are not up for bargaining next year.
I don't think so, because we just, they just signed, I know that SEA and the district signed a contract, I believe it was earlier in 2024, towards the end of 2024?
Correct, the only outstanding CBA is food service, which we're actively in negotiations for now. We completed deals with all the other bargaining units this school year, so we're about three years out from having to re-up.
I don't think its purpose was to, was to have an impact now, it's probably just to educate us on the process.
Oh yeah, I just, but I just figuring out if you were going to go to one or the other.
Where is it being held?
That's a great question, and I don't know at the top of my head. That's a great question, and I don't know at the top of my head, but it is on MASC.org under events.
And is there anybody, is there anybody interested in going to the conference this November? Okay.
New member Stephanie.
I would also encourage.
November 11th through the 12th, and it's at the Hyannis Inn Resort. They're the Cape, I think.
There we go. So for those that are interested, past practice, reach out to the superintendent's office. They'll get the registration and get that squared away. I would encourage reaching out to MASC, see if maybe they're willing to cover some of the costs and help the school budget overall. Lodging would be up to the attendee, although there is a reimbursement. There is an expense report after that. Just make sure you get your receipts. And there is mileage, I believe, also for travel. It's a dollar twenty-five for a mile, something like that. Might be less than that. I may be dead wrong.
I believe it's under a dollar.
Andrew gets a dollar twenty-five. Nobody else gets.
I don't remember what it was, okay? But I know I did it and I got paid for the mileage to go there and back. It was reimbursed after the fact. So there's a lot of avenues to be able to attend, and I attended in 2019. I would encourage anyone that hasn't attended to attend. As newer members, a lot of the charting the course and thing, and required training sessions are conducted during that conference. So it'll allow you to go through open meeting law training, conflict of interest training, charting the course, which is necessary to be completed within your first year of being elected. Those are all conducted there. To Member Davidson's point, it is a great place to network and meet superintendents and other school committee members, get perspectives. When I was there, I had great conversation with that then, the chairman of the Holyoke School Committee, and we had a lot of discussion back and forth. I did get to meet a couple of superintendents also. It was, it was a fun time six years ago, so I'd assume the fun still carries on today.
It does.
But the sooner the better that you have an answer as whether or not you'll be able to attend. Sometimes the MA, the conference does offer packages for lodging, but it does book up very, very quickly. It may already be sold out. But the sooner you have, I would reach out to Mr. Metzger, and I would encourage, you know, we can reach out to MASC and see if they'd be willing to cover some of that and help us out.
I just got my paperwork today, you know, through the mail from MASC, and they said that the keynote speaker for one of the dinners is going to be our new commissioner, which I thought was someone we should see.
One more. I can't remember. I have one more thing to say about the, oh, the summer institute, collective bargaining's not really, there's trainings done at the MASC conference, so if there's some of the trainings that you haven't, like newer members attending the necessary things, I would encourage you to before you take the collective bargaining training. But if you do the summer institute and the conference, it'll be extremely helpful, and I think it'll give you a well-rounded picture overall of what we're going to need to do moving forward as a committee to continue to move through the DESI plan. And continued involvement afterwards with MASC, they do a lot of these events, so MASC.org lists the events constantly and consistently. So if there's something that you see that's going on that interests you but might not interest other people, you know, just jump in and see if you can. And I would encourage at least three members of this board to go to that summer institute, so I think it'd be very important. Do you have anything else on that? Or any other further discussion from anybody else? Any questions?
I just wanted to expand on an answer to a question that was posed in the, in the last agenda item. So written notification letters are sent home to students in quarter four that are in risk of either failing based on academic performance or losing credit for attendance, and then guidance counselors again follow up directly with families and students.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions or discussion regarding the summer institute and the MASC conference? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to agenda item number 12, discussion on progress towards meeting DESI plan, expectations to build school committee capacity. Before I turn this over to everybody. Dr. Rodriguez did share the, in your packets from today, you do have the Phase Two Progress Capacity Building Plan in a little more easier to read fashion.
It's Mr. Rodriguez.
I'm so sorry. Be, just a brief overview, three, two, ones to continue working, working relationships, continue to maintain positive working relationships with the receiver, and act as stewards for the school district as described in Phase One. I highlight that just because, you know, I know come July 1st, beginning of a new year for you and new strategies and the new approach. So working with Mr. Metzger and his administrative team for everybody, I think, is going to be crucial in this first transition year with the new receiver and superintendent, and providing support and positive information and impressions to the community, I think is going to be extremely beneficial, would be extremely beneficial for the district. The monthly collaboration meetings between the superintendent, the school committee chair and vice chair, I look forward to seeing those continue with new leadership. Continuing to attend EHS meetings, I think, is also important. And again, I would encourage everybody to continue to reach out to our local elected officials and, and local bodies too. I know we have two members here that work closely with an organization that helps the community out greatly. So as far as, you know, continuing to maybe potentially volunteer with those programs and trying to make those bridges, extend those bridges out to other organizations within town, I think, because there's been great work done this year, and I look forward to seeing the great work that can continue, can continue next year, because it just moves on to the second, I guess this would be the third page, three, two, one on teamwork. Members should use the MASC handbook code of ethics to guide their work. The acceptance of a code of ethics implies the understanding of basic organization of school committees under the law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This code of ethics outlines three areas of a school committee member's responsibility to the community, to the administration, and to fellow community, committee members. Three, two, one, on the parliamentary procedure, there is a session that's going to be scheduled over the summer with the town manager and town council chairman related to Robert's rules and agenda setting and how to conduct meetings. That will probably be done, I probably foresee anywhere between July to the end of August, getting that squared away. There is a webinar to the next page, as far as the open meeting law goes. There is a webinar conducted by the AG's office. There's a link in the packet. I would encourage, if you have not attended, if you have attended, please reach out to Carla and myself with the date of your attendance, just so we can get that submitted over to Mr. Rodriguez. And if you have not, please schedule that ASAP. I know that there's one being run this summer, but it won't happen again until the fall. It's about 90 minutes, so it's not, not a long time. I know we did get the intro to open meeting law, but this is more of a focus, more of a focus and in-depth with it. So that'll be, that'll continue to help the school committee conduct themselves appropriately and conduct public meetings in proper manner. Moving to the next page, basics of policy. That is a training that we've been in discussion with, with Ms. Novick from MASC over the last couple of months. MASC's got their hands full at the current moment, just with, you know, end of fiscal year and things, and institute, trainings and institutes going on. So the near future, we, they, July and August dates have been floated. Those will probably be made concrete in, in the coming, in the coming months, and that information will be relayed from new leadership out to the school committee members. Effective collaboration with community members. All of us should be documenting any type of collaboration they are doing, related to whether it be with our state rep or state senator, anybody from town council, the, anybody from public safety, parent advisory councils, community agencies and boards, student government, Southbridge Business Partnership, PTOs, things of the sort. If you haven't attended the, if you haven't reviewed the roundtable discussion on engaging with the public, I encourage you to do so. I know Ms. Tiznick had attended that. So, and it definitely, for those, I will say, I did review it, for those that have a problem with public speaking or public engagement, there are, there is training in there that if you do listen, it will help you kind of work through that. One of the largest fears is public speaking and talking to strangers in a capacity. So just attending that, just reviewing that kind of brings the nerves down a bit, and it'll allow you to get a better understanding and kind of give yourself a mental game plan. You can create that. That provides tools to help you create that, to overcome that if that is an issue. I know my first year on the school committee, it took me a couple of months to open my mouth pretty well, just because being up behind this day is, and representing, being a steward for the district is a lot of pressure. So I would encourage, I think Ms. Tiznick can agree that does help, that training did help, so I would encourage you to, to do that. And if you do review this, please confirm with myself or Carla on new to leadership after, with an if it does occur after the next meeting. Just make sure that's communicated thoroughly. We're well on our way through Phase Two, moving on to Phase Three, a couple of final steps. So I would encourage members to keep moving forward. We're, we're on a phenomenal pace. This train's been moving smoothly and quickly. So continue the momentum, and there'll be a lot larger discussion, you know, moving into next year, hopefully. So now with that being said, I am going to start the discussion with Member Tiznick.
Good evening, everyone. So I would say I've been pretty busy these past 30 days, 31 days. As of May 19, I have completed a school tour with all five schools, all five schools providing a unique insight. And as a parent and a community member of Southbridge for 22 years, having three of my own children, I can definitely say the school tours changed my perspective of the school system. So kudos to all the educators in Southbridge. I was able to also attend the Latino Shine Award, being a supportive to the school to, to the school educators, to the two school educators that were awarded. I also was able to attend the Memorial Day Parade, walking with the fellow community, committee members. I have also sat in on the high school graduation, class of 2025, seeing their accomplishments overall was just a very emotional moment. I was also able to sit in at the middle school, high school, middle school graduation. Also was able to do a training with the school board partners some weekend in May. And I think that's it for the month of May of my contribution.
Awesome, awesome, though. Good to see that we have members out there. We'll move on to Ms. Davis.
Okay, so I did attend an ALPAC meeting, which was a parent advisory council. I was impressed to see not only teachers from the school, but a lot of parents in attendance. So I did reach out the next day to Mr. Metzger and Karen from the Special Education Department to talk about collaborating. And so I think we're going to work on setting up a meeting in August to talk about how to engage more parents in both of the parent advisory councils, but also to keep it going, because that seems to be one of the problems that we've, that we've had. I also signed up for a CPAC trainings that the Federation is putting on. I think it's every other Tuesday over the summer, Tuesday and Thursday over the summer, which was sent to me by one of the co-chairs of the CPAC. And so I did also send that out to Karen to share with the parents of children with special education if they want to attend that. It is on Zoom and it's free. I attended a graduation council where Martina was also present, where there was some discussion on what the graduation requirements were going to be. And I thought that was helpful just to hear other people from the state and their perspectives on what they were thinking, and I did share insights with the rest of the committee on that. I also attended the school board's partner training with Norma. It was very educational and helpful, again, to see other members of the school committee, not only in Massachusetts, we also had some people from out of state that were there, and that's something that they're going to work on putting on more of in New England. So if, you know, we hear any of that, I'll make sure to share it. I attended an MASC learning lunch a few weeks ago. I also attended the high school graduation, and I just want to commend the chorus and the band for doing an amazing job with their performance. I thought it was spectacular. I think everybody really enjoyed themselves, so it was great to see that. And I also attended the Charlton Street School Time Capsule opening as a school committee member, but then I found out that it was actually my class who participated in that. And I couldn't remember until I got there and saw a picture of myself. So I thought that was great, that there was a lot of the old teachers that were able to come back. Quite a few of the students were able to come back and just reminisce and see all the memories that we used to have. So I thought that was really amazing. And I hope that maybe this year or next year, Charlton Street will do another time capsule, and in 20, 25 years, they'll be able to open that. And I also want to say, I did also attend the Memorial Day Parade with most of the committee members up here, and I also want to commend Mr. Metzger for being able to join us. I appreciate the work that we're doing and moving forward and having him be a part of those things. I think it's definitely a step in the right direction, and that is all.
So what grade were you in when the time capsule was?
Second grade. I have pictures. I'll show you later. Who was my teacher? Mrs. Caplat.
So I will move down here to Member Torres.
Yeah, so first I wanted to say congratulations to the class of 2025, and also, you know, the eighth grade class as well. I attended the graduation and it was phenomenal. Also too, I also attended the Pioneer's Athletic and Academic Award as well, to see these students do so well and continue, you know, striving and moving forward for their next, you know, chapter in high school as well. I also visited the middle school and high school. It was a great opportunity to see the new school, see, you know, all the classes and all the students doing great, and it was just amazing, amazing experience to see it fronthand, as well as, you know, meeting all the teachers and the principals. It was, it was a great experience. Also too, congratulations to those candidates that got elected as well. And yeah, just trying to think, I'm sorry. We also, I also attended the Memorial Day Parade. I want to thank the Veterans Council also for organizing that as well. It was a great experience to share those special moments, and also to see the students speak during that, during the ceremony and celebration, which I also seen them get an honors award. So, you know, congratulations to all those great students this year as well that did so well, and those that are moving to the next chapter. But so far, but more to come.
Member Kepinski.
I did fill out the questionnaire. I forgot who sent it from the state for the graduation requirements. I was very surprised, I guess is one word, how many options there were to choose from, what you thought were, yeah, I believe it was a top four, five, whatever. There seemed to be 15 or more different options to choose from. So I'm very curious to see how that will turn out. I did want to agree with Member Tiznick, though, last year when I went to the middle, high school, West Street, Charlton Street, Charlton Street School is, without having been, there's just a, I guess, a vibe or some sense of what you think it would be like. And it wasn't that at all. So that, those visits last year did that at all, so that, those visits last year did put aside any presumptions I may have previously. When I visited West Street School, the first time I'd been there in, I can't say how many years, because I don't remember, but it was so much bigger and different, just the scale of things were big, and we did see some of the issues with the building at the time that our previous superintendent had brought up, so I'm looking forward to the new building project, whichever direction we're going, but, yeah, that was it for now, thank you.
Member Shay.
Like all the other members, I did all of those fun things, I did the fun things, the best thing was the graduation. I'm always, always teary-eyed at graduation, what a thing, how important it is to have that high school diploma, we just can't stress it enough. Everyone will, every job you go to for the rest of your life, they will say, do you have a high school diploma, and you get to check that box. Obviously, we want you to go on for more education, but that is the, that's the foundation. Also, I will save you my stint on summer reading until next time, because it's been kind of a long meeting, but know that summer reading, and do do it.
Madam Vice Chair.
All right, so first I just want to congratulate Stephanie for winning, and I'm happy that you're here today, thank you for showing up, and I look forward to working with you. Then, I also wanted to say, I've been busy. I did do the open meeting law, that was on April twenty-ninth. Both the chair and I do the bi-weekly check-ins with Mr. Rodriguez, I also attended the Memorial Day Parade with most members. I was fortunate enough to go to the Shine Awards, to be with the two phenomenal educators that won, very proud moment, and I think we were the loudest. I also, since I'm one of the fellows from the school board, I went to a couple of meetings, they run every other week, so I attended the superintendent management that they had, and just recently this week was about communication with the community itself, so learning a lot about that. I did go to the high school and middle school graduation, that was very exciting to see, like Brittany mentioned, like, I thought the best part was not only the diplomas and the crying, but also, like, they had me dancing. I was like, whoa, this was not in my high school. It was really fantastic, and you just, you just felt it. And then, let's see, what else? And then I'm also part of what, the CPAC, the Summer CPAC, those meetings are going to start, I think, next month?
Next Tuesday.
Oh, never mind, next Tuesday. I need a secretary. And then Family Fun Day is actually this Saturday, the CPAC, we're going to have, well, I won't be able to make it, but Brittany should be there for the CPAC table from eleven to three, check it out, free event, it has free food, free activities, free raffles, it's a good time for the community to come together, this is like the first year that I'm going to be not there. Usually I volunteer every year, but this year I have a training, so, and it's a full day, so I can't make it, but definitely check out Family Fun Day. And then the last bit I wanted to say is kudos as well to our superintendent for being present, I want to acknowledge that and say thank you, we do appreciate that, you being here, it means a lot, not only to us, but I know the community itself, so thank you for that. And also I wanted to say a few words to our outgoing chair. I just wanted to say, like, thank you so much for your dedication and your service for the school committee, your leadership has left an impact on our students, families, and community, and I just wanted to wish you the very best that's ahead, and you will be missed, and we just thank you for what you've done for us.
Thank you. I will move on to the moved agenda item number six, chairman's announcements. I also did attend both the high school graduation and the Memorial Day Parade. This was the first year the school committee as a whole was invited, in, to my memory, so that's already a step in the right direction in building the bridge with local community organizations. I'd like to thank Dave Adams for reaching out to us and inviting us, and almost the entire committee was in attendance, it was great to see Mr. Metzger march with us, and we got to march behind the Southbridge marching band, and they did a great job throughout, and I'm going to be honest, hearing the band nerd banter kind of reminded me of my own high school, so it's great to see that there's, you know, those groups of students that are involved in things like that, that that tight-knit collective is still, that culture is still there, so that was great to see as far as from the student body goes. At the high school, I agree, I'm going to use some vernacular here, the chorus and the musical numbers they did was, as the youngins would say, lit fam. Honestly, I am a, I am a blue-collar guy that works on cars, and I don't move unless I have to, so them, and I'm jamming out, sitting in my seat, having a grand old time, so I commend the music, the music staff and the chorus, you guys did a phenomenal job and sent off the class of 2025 with, with a great performance. And it was emotional, this is the last graduating class I get to see as a school committee member and school committee chair, NIA speech made me cry, that was, you know, and just seeing some of the graduates, I've been family friends of them, so seeing them walk across and remembering when they were we, to see their accomplishments, it was an emotional, it was a positive emotional experience. And seeing almost the entirety of the town council there also, representing our students, to show off for our students was also great to see. And I will also, you know, to the retirees, they honored Ms. Cook very, very well, AKA Cookie, and I think that was well-deserved, and it was a great, great experience. I will round out that, I've been on this board for six years, I joined in 2019, where kind of we were in a little bit disarray, and we were doing our best, and I had no idea what I was doing, but all I knew is I wanted to make an effect change. In a Facebook post a few weeks ago, I did kind of surmise the positive parts of, some of the positive work that I've been able to do over, over my tenure, but I want to leave the school committee, I want to leave you guys with some of my mistakes, to hope that you guys can learn from them, because, you know, at the end of the day, I've always tried to operate under the radar, I've never tried to be in the public eye, or try to get any glory or fame for anything that I've done, because quite frankly, it ain't about that, it's about the students, because the people in these seats change every year. So I will say, with, I will talk, review my mistakes with some of the lessons that I learned from my grandfather, I call them Papa-isms, just quite a few phrases to try to lead your principles as you continue to move forward and not make the same mistakes I did. One of the things that he taught me, and I'm finally taking this to light, which is why tonight is my last meeting as a school committee member, is life is a buffet, so don't fill your plate all up at once, enjoy it, you have people, not only in the community that care about you, but you got your friends and your family, and they care, they care to make sure that they see you, and that you're involved with them, too. There was, for a while, I put this above family, I'll admit, and that's one of the things that I think I regret, you know, I look back after six years, my son was nine when I joined, or ten when I joined this, he's sixteen now, we're talking about driving lessons, and just that flew by very, very quick. Also, just because perspective is never wrong, it's just different. You know, everybody has, the beautiful part about America is, everybody has a different opinion, and everybody has the right to share it, but just because somebody comes from a different viewpoint, or has a different viewpoint on a certain subject matter, doesn't mean that it's wrong, it's just different, and you can honestly learn the most from those that disagree with you. I'm actually going to kind of call out, Ms. Shay has been the greatest opposition to a lot of my viewpoints over my tenure here, and I am thankful for that opposition, because I did learn a lot from it. When you, when you think your way, it's very hard to understand somebody else's point of view, so sometimes just separating yourself from you is the best way to be able to move forward as you. Sometimes it changes your mind, most of the time, for me, I'm as stubborn as a mule, I didn't do it often, but it did. Also, if you're, a true leader is never, is always a part of the team, to the next school, to the school committee leadership, the chair and the vice chair, understand that the only way you lead is hand, the best way to lead isn't necessarily hands-on, but hands-in. I've, in management, I don't boss people around, I don't tell people what to do, I guide them on the right path that they're already on, that's just me and my industry, but I learned a lot from that. There were times where I was a little too hands-off, sometimes I was a little too hands-on, and trying to balance the balance is very difficult, I am not a gymnast, I didn't do well at it, I'll admit, and just remembering, you know, that's something I took to heart coming down in the closing months as I reflected, and, and I hope that the new leadership, again, you know, you don't stand in front of, you stand with, and that's very, I think that's, that's the way I've tried to guide this year as best as I could, I think we've done well, I think it's, you know, I don't, I didn't want to tell anybody what to do, I wanted you guys to be your own steward, and I am proud to say that everybody up here has done phenomenal work independently and working together with others on this committee, and I didn't tell anybody to do that, it was all you as members, and that's, it's great to see, and, and I know that the momentum's going to carry next year, and I'm excited, and I'll be in support out there, give me a month, I'm not coming to July's meeting, y'all are on your own, I'm taking a break, but I do look forward to attending every, the second Tuesday of every month in town council chambers at seven PM to watch you guys continue the great work that we've all started this year. And the, I would say the last little bit is, don't be so busy working that you forget to live. I understand what it means to overfill your plate, I made some mistakes in my, in the last few years that I learned greatly from, but it's because I overloaded my plate and I took on too much thinking I could do it. When you have the motivation to change the world, you've got to realize that you really can't do that by yourself or all at once. So we have responsibilities as members, but you also have a responsibility to yourself, and make sure that you understand that you are important just as you, and it's not just your job to make the change, it's being part of that team. And it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with y'all this year, honestly, this is the best school committee I've worked with over the last six years, you guys have made me so proud, and I appreciated the opportunity as chair. And even to Ms. Kathy LaPreiori and Mr. Shaw, who started this year with us, you guys still had the momentum with us, you moved with us until the end of your tenure with us, and I greatly appreciate it, and it's, and to Ms. Rivers and Ms. Soto, it takes a hell of a lot to step up and run a write-in campaign, and then to make it a competitive write-in campaign is probably the most arduous thing you can do in local politics, so I thank both of you for running. Congratulations to Ms. Tiznick, Ms. Torres, and Ms. Rivers for winning their elections this year. The people of Southbridge chose you for a reason, it's, you feel, just always remember, you fill the seat and try to do right by the seat, and that you're not only there for your views, but you're there because the town of Southbridge believes that they can reach out to you and communicate with you, and do so effectively as best as you can, and always understand that somebody else's life may not be yours, schedules don't always line up, people's availability don't always, aren't the same, but trying to work together and work around that as effectively as you can will not only help y'all, but will help encourage future members. Our time will be done, mine's after tonight, and, and, you know, the rest of the members y'all will leave this dais at some point, and it's our job to not only be stewards for the district while we're here, but stewards for this body, to encourage others to step up, because I would love to see more competitive races. I will say one last thing, you know, thanks to the town of Southbridge, you guys have allowed, the citizens have allowed me to serve these last six years, and I've done so as best as I could. I wasn't perfect, but I will always, I leave with this, if you ask for perfection from your leaders and locally-elected officials, you're only asking to be lied to. Nobody's perfect on this dais, in any capacity, whether it be any board that sits on this dais, none of us are perfect. The sooner that we understand that, the sooner we can work together. Perfection is not something you obtain, it's something you always strive for. And I, again, I appreciate all of the members I've served with, the community, and y'all up here tonight, it's been an honor. Our next regularly-scheduled meeting will be July, do, 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 July eighth, the reorganizational meeting will be coming, will come first, that will be immediately followed by the regularly-scheduled school committee meeting. With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All of those in favor? Any opposed? Is unanimous of all present?